Please stand and Suzanne Norris will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to offer a moment of silence for Dr. Chuck Hall. I think Dr. Barrett has a few words.
Just that I think the majority of you knew Dr. Hall, probably Mr. Medina was the only one. You all served as trustees under him, and he served as the third president of this institution from, I believe, 1997 until 2015. And he helped me a great deal in his transition here, and he did a lot of great things here at this college, and we'll miss him. And the foundation had dedicated a friend of the foundation to him in 2017 for all his work with the institution. And last time, I think many of us saw him was about two years ago, a year and a half ago, at the foundation luncheon. So he'll always be missed. The Hall Center, the Student Center, is named after him, and we did a nice dedication over there for him. And I have placed in your packets his obituary and the information for his funeral. We'll be sending some flowers and so forth. I may be back or may not be back from Pennsylvania, but I know some of you are planning on attending. He'll always be dear in our hearts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Audience of any citizen, the FGC Board of Trustees will hear any citizen who wishes to address the Board on a one-time basis pertaining to a relevant topic. If the Board wishes to hear more about the topic, that topic will be scheduled for a future Board meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and the time dedicated to this topic will not exceed 20 minutes. Are there any citizens who would like to address the Board? Mr. Stu Lilker?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Nice to be here tonight, two things. On my little digital pad, the first thing is course deletions. I don't think course deletions should be on the consent agenda. It really doesn't give the public enough time to comment about them. I didn't bring my computer tonight. But I know one thing on the list is the elimination of teaching Western civilization. I don't even know how that's possible, that anybody could even consider removing that course. I mean, that is like one of the most bizarre things I've ever heard. So I'm asking that that course, even though you guys don't want to teach it, but haven't taught it in quite some time, the elimination should be rescinded in that course. And I'm not sure which the other ones are, because I didn't bring my computer tonight, but that course should remain on the list. People don't know history. I keep hearing for years here how important local history is. Well, I have news for you. The history of Western civilization is probably just important, and education makes people better people, makes them better parents, better citizens. So I think that needs to be rescinded. Regarding the Lake City Council meeting the other night, and I read in the newspaper about the presidents, and I spoke to them on the phone about this, criticism of Mr. Jernigan. I was at that meeting. There was no animus with that. Everybody there supported Florida Gateway College. And what the president did, and I told him on the phone, not talking behind his back, I don't do that to folks, was totally uncalled for. And I would ask you and all your lieutenants and generals over here and vice generals to think about this. If Mr. Jernigan and all the other trustees of the city of Lake City had no idea of what the enrollment of Florida Gateway College is, then maybe this has something to do with all of you, not just Mr. Jernigan. Because not one person of the five, nor the city manager, nor anybody else, I could have got up and said something, but I didn't, had any idea what the enrollment of this college is. You see the advertisements in the newspaper across the top, and I've inquired about those, and there's nothing followed up on that to see how that affects Lake City Community College. Lake City Community College, yeah, that's what it should be called, how that affects enrollment, there's no follow-up. So I would just ask you to consider that, that this had nothing to do with the city council or Mr. Jernigan. It had to do with the communication of this college board and these folks here, who are pretty good folks, and their communication skills. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the agenda is the approval of Board minutes from the February 13 meeting. Are there any items the Board wishes to discuss or make a correction? Well, is there a motion to approve the Board minutes?
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion to approve the minutes, as presented.
Dr. Searcy makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Medina.
Mr. Medina makes a second. The second, all in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is the Student Government Report, but our Student Government Representative was not able to be here tonight. And we thank her for her service to Florida Gateway College, and I know she would be here if she could. The next item is the presentation of the Consent Agenda. The items on the Consent Agenda are routine business, state directives, and/or compliance items. All items have been reviewed by the Board Attorney and have been available to the Board for its examination. Any trustee can request a topic to be removed from the Consent Agenda and discussed further. Typographical errors will be noted and corrected in the Board Minutes. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda that a Board member would like to remove for discussion? Is there a motion to accept the Consent Agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Dr. Tepadino makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Suzanne Norris makes the seconds the motion, and all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The Consent Agenda is accepted. The next item on the agenda is our Academic Affairs Report by Dr. Kathleen Seaz-Volz.
Good evening, honored trustees. I am most pleased to share updates on behalf of the Academic Affairs Division, starting with Liberal Arts and Sciences, where recently one of our students, Pearl Wilburn, received a special scholarship to study blacksmithing with an artist in Gainesville. And equally excitedly, tomorrow marks the due date for submissions from our students to the college's award-winning Literary and Art Magazine, HAO. In workforce, career, and technical education, a team of faculty and staff have been working busily on a new baccalaureate proposal for public safety management, and we wish especially to acknowledge the work of Dr. Crystal Clark. As well, recently, the Workforce Education Team hosted an Experience Day in partnership with Summers Elementary School. And if you can picture this, students got to experience the CDL trucks, fire trucks, they got to sit in police cars, and even have their faces painted and their hair tinted by cosmetology faculty. It was certainly a day for them to remember. In teacher preparation, we are delighted to share that the faculty and staff hosted a book sampling event. At tables across the room, teacher candidates sampled books representing different themes, topics, and genres for elementary children, all the while stopping to enjoy cupcakes and cookies. And if perchance you have an opportunity to visit the academy, there you will find a brand-new digital sign at the entranceway, thanks to the generous support of FGC and its educational partner, 240 Tutoring. Likewise, in nursing and health sciences, we have had a team of dedicated faculty and staff who've worked for months to prepare for last week's ASIN site visit. Special commendations go to Dr. Patricia Ornder for her leadership, as well as Assistant Dean Anne Brown. We look forward to receiving the results of the site visit next month in April and accordingly responding to them. Recognized statewide for her subject matter expertise and leadership in the profession, Dr. Ornder recently participated in a nursing symposium, offering her expertise on enhancing not only nursing education, but the nursing workforce. And in libraries and institutional effectiveness, Associate Dean Christine Boatright and her team continue to work diligently and collaboratively in preparation for the college's next strategic plan, having conducted numerous focus groups with different programs and departments across the campus. They're also working interdepartmentally on a set of SAC COC compliance narratives and the institution's fifth-year interim report, due just months away on September 8th. And lastly, we wish to share on behalf of the e-learning and academic quality team that considerable momentum continues to be gained in the review and revision of the processes for both face-to-face and online faculty observations and portfolio evaluations. And in fact, yesterday, Associate Dean Brandon McIntyre unveiled the latest set of drafts to the Academic Affairs Leadership Team. Those efforts represent the collective input of about 20 colleagues, and we're looking forward to a very strong implementation on behalf of faculty and student learning in the next calendar year. We conclude our Academic Affairs Report and welcome any questions or feedback that you might have.
Any questions? Any discussion over the report? I do have one. So we have a student going into blacksmithing.
Yes.
Do you know anything about the background of that student, what led them into that?
I don't personally know, but the student has been studying not only in the blacksmithing and welding area, but also is a member of the art club and has been under the tutelage of Dr. Denise Gross. So there's an artistic as well as a mechanical and scientific component to her interests, and I'd be glad to inquire further, because we were so excited that she had this scholarship opportunity.
That is, that's amazing, because we're close to Ocala and horse country.
Oh, yeah.
And those careers in blacksmithing are very lucrative now with the racehorse industry. So that's a unique idea for a student to have, and I think it's great that you and the college have helped that student get to the place that they can actually get training.
Thank you, Vice Chair Allen, and we want to give all the credit, especially to Dr. Gross, to Professor Lisa Coe, and others who've been supporting Pearl. She's one of our student workers and has been an enthusiastic contributor.
Okay, well, that's great. Thank you for your report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Allen. A thank you.
I'm gonna do Casey's report.
Yeah. The next item on the agenda is Student Affairs and Public Information with Mr. Tony Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, Board of Trustees. A little over 24 hours ago, I stood at this podium and had the honor and privilege of addressing our Student Government Association, right here in this room. Before I came in, I was told there may not be many students as spring break starts about 18 minutes ago. To my surprise, I walked in and there were close to 30 students in this room, being led by Zamaria, our Student Government President. Her leadership and the mentorship shown by Amy Deagle was the primary driver for having 30-plus students here on the Wednesday before spring break begins. I know she's not here today. She does send her regrets. She is currently playing flag football against Pasco Hernando State, hopefully bringing home another victory. I'll stay on athletics in a way. I wanted to announce the installation of the new gym floor in the Howard Center, which began on March 3rd. The old floor has been, is nearly removed, and the new wood has been sourced from Wisconsin and is on its way down here now. Some is already here as it's acclimating to the Florida humidity, just like I had to when I came down. So we want to make sure that that is good wood in that floor. We are looking at a completion date of March 1st, one week prior to graduation, so we can have all of our events back in the Howard Center again. Speaking of flag football, they kicked off the season with two dominant wins, winning both games 52 to nothing over Pasco Hernando State and Point University. The scouting report that I'm getting back is that this is the most dominant flag football team maybe in the history of college flag football, as they are better than the previous two years. This team will play five games over the spring break period. Our women's softball team has won 11 out of their last 14 games, and is just one game behind first place in the Sun Lakes Conference. They'll play six games over spring break. And women's golf made history, winning their first tournament in program history at the Jefferson State Tournament in Gulf Shores, Alabama. After trailing by 12 strokes after the first round, the team battled back through challenging conditions, I'm hearing 45 mile-an-hour winds, to take the title. Carly Gany, Lake City, was the low medalist, finishing just two over par. So they won their first tournament. Now, you might be asking, how do we get to watch the women's golf team? When do we get our opportunity to see them? And that's a great question, because on Monday and Tuesday, March 17th and 18th, Florida Gateway College Women's Golf will host the FGC Lady Timberwolves Spring Invitational Tournament at the Country Club at Lake City. 62 golfers from 13 colleges and universities will gather Monday for two days, 36-hole stroke play tournaments, hopefully gonna make it two in a row. Our Bass Fishing Team, of course, is incredibly active and on the move. They will be competing in the Major League Fishing National Championship at Lake Wheeler in Decatur, Alabama, April 9th through 11th, and we have four anglers that have qualified for that tournament. And finally, the U.S. Women's National Flag Football Team will actually have two Florida Gateway College players at their very first training opportunity in Charlotte, North Carolina next week. They are two of 60 players across the country that have been invited to participate in this event. Freshman Alex Harris and, no, excuse me, sophomore Alex Harris and freshman London Jenkins are our two student athletes representing us. So hopefully one day they'll be representing the red, white, and blue.
That's for the Olympics in 2028.
Yes.
Man, that's nuts.
Great.
Also this week, we hosted Student Activities. I hosted the very first Mardi Gras celebration. We had over 250 students, faculty, and staff come out. It made the front page of the Lake City Reporter, so if you have that copy, there are photos. We had a band, lots of food, lots of excitement around that. And finally, from the Public Information Office, we hosted our Blood Drive in partnership with the Life South Community Blood Centers on March 11th, where we collected 10 donations and potentially saved up to 30 lives. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our Enrollment and Marketing Report will be given by Dr. Barrett.
It will be given now? Okay. Ms. Raiders away, took a little early vacation. We held a open house on March 7th from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. and had a great turnout. Over 100 prospective students and their families and friends showed up for a total of 300-plus in attendance. She also wanted us, like Kathleen had mentioned, to give kudos to Siwana Wilson, our recruiter, and Madison Morton, who's our CTE coordinator. They visited yesterday from Summers Elementary School, made up of 3rd to 5th graders. Was a wonderful time. Students had lunch in Pine Square. We do have a video of that, but I guess the guys didn't get it going yet for today. And I heard that in Lake City, all the elementary schools will have one day in the next month or so that will be having a day of CTE again for the rest of those people just from Lake City. Summer registration will begin March 31st when we get back. Senior night in the library, we'll have high school seniors complete their FAFSA's for all five district schools, and we have our Summer One Stop Enrollment Day on April 17th. Something that might be important to all of you is that, and it is important to all of us, is the Board of Trustees Scholarship applications for 2025 and '26 are now with the committee. We had 112 students apply. We'll have recipients identified by early April, and we will be awarding them in person at their schools shortly after. And for those of you who want to know how many we award, 62. So we have 112 students applying for 62 awards. And Madam Chair, that is the Enrollment Management Report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barrett. Our next report is Business Services with Michelle Holloway.
Good afternoon. I'd like to request approval of Budget Amendment Number 7, the current, or excuse me, the Restricted Current Fund, Fund 2, for the fiscal year 2425. This amendment recognizes revised award authorizations and new grants received in the 2425 fiscal year.
Is there any discussion questions about this? Is there a motion to approve this?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 7, the Restricted Current Fund, Fund 2.
Second. So motion made by Dr. Searcy and seconded by Suzanne Norris. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Next item?
My next item, we are requesting approval of Fund 7, Budget Amendment 7, which has been revised, so the report reflects actual revenue, revised budgeted expenditures, actual expenses, and updated projects through February 25th, 2025.
I'll make a motion.
Any discussion? Is there a motion to approve this budget amendment?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Dr. Tepadino makes the motion.
Second.
Second. Okay, John Medina. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the President's Report will be given by Dr. Barrett.
First, I want to give kudos to Dr. Seaz-Volz and the faculty for all their hard work on the general education process that is finally completed. Been a long, exhaustive, but very transparent process that began with the highest office in Florida, from the governor's office, to review general education requirements, all the way down through the state legislature, through legislative processes, and then it comes to the college. And they had issued some courses that we should look at. We looked at them fully as a faculty, and those courses are presented in your packet this afternoon. So it's been a thorough, transparent process, and courses such as Western Civilization, if you look across the state of Florida, they will be eliminated by any school down the road as general education requirements. So I wanted to say that. So thank you, Kathleen, and all your service for that. Want to thank Renee for her this past month. It was 36 years?
Forty.
Four, oh, I gotta change that. All right, well, it's 36, maybe. Forty years of service as the director or coordinator of our science fairs. She finally has said she's quitting, but I think she'll be back, but anyway. So the thing is, I just want to think, what a wonderful opportunity. I was not able to be here this year, but I've known through the other nine years, what a wonderful bringing science to youngsters in middle school, all the way up through high school, and she's seen it through to the high school state finals in Orlando. So thank you so much for everything you've done for us, and hopefully we do just as good a job as we take over. Ally does just as good a job as you for the next 40 years. So thank you so much.
That's a good word.
So a couple of other good news events. Yesterday, we had the dedication of the Ted L. Gary Anatomy and Physiology Building. Friends, family, and the campus community came out for the event. Amy Gary was so enthralled with the turnout, everyone had a great time, and the anatomy physiology faculty were excited to show off that building and all their toys and the tonnage and all sorts of things they have. I avoided the cadavers at all costs. I avoided the cadavers at all costs. As soon as I talk about it, I feel like I have to pass out, as you know, Dr. Tepadino. So legislatively, we have two, have asked for two capital projects related to HVAC. We're requesting new HVAC systems for the Howard Center and the automotive technology buildings. They are low asks under the $750,000 threshold. As VP Cardenas mentioned, the floor in the gym is being replaced first time in over 50 years. We just couldn't do it anymore. And sanding it down and so forth. And it's an old parquet floor, as many of you know. I'm happy to report that we will be replacing it with another parquet floor. Took a lot of effort to do that. That's why we had to go to Wisconsin. But it'll be much bigger pieces. But the most important thing for me is, is we're getting a new floor, but we're doing it at an inexpensive rate, a lot less, about 30,000 or 40,000 because we're not doing it over the summer. We're trying to do it between March and April. It's giving me some anxiety because they said we're going to be done by May 9th for graduation. We better be. Hope we have an outside graduation. So a couple of other things I wanted to mention to you. They're in packets, your information about graduation, if you can attend and so forth. Remember, there's two graduations on that date. And the other thing I want to mention is, is I'm personally working with Carol West on a Dixie County program with the Dixie County Foundation for a summer boot camp, not just for academics, but to have students get registered and encourage them to attend college. They've done such a great job in getting scholarship dollars, but they do have a significant summer melt. So we'll be providing some dollars to college to try to help Dixie County students. And I believe they're going to help us somewhat financially, too. So it's a great partnership with those rural initiatives. And I, one last thing legislatively. I got to present, I was one of four college, state college presidents to the Higher Education Appropriations Committee. It was about three or four weeks ago. And one lady is here, and the other one, Anne and Patricia, presented in the Health Professions and Programs Subcommittee for all their work and how they've turned around the NCLEX passing rates. So they were there, we were there. It was a real good day for FGC. And Madam Chair, that is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Barrett. Topics for future meetings. Would anyone like to bring up something?
So I'd like to just say something as a suggestion. So there's just been, as a resident of Columbia County, there's been so much change at the city council, so much noise, and so many, just new things that have happened up here. I think it would be appropriate to ask them to come out for a tour of our college. I know that you've extended it in the past, Dr. Barrett, but again, it may have been to people that aren't even there anymore. And so just with so many things going on here, and people may not have, you know, the college is not their top of mind. They have other jobs and things to do. But a great opportunity to bring them out to campus, show them all of the fantastic new technology that we have for students, help them understand how we partner to help grow this community. But let's take that as an opportunity to, you know, to tell them more about our story, let them be advocates. But, you know, again, there's so much change at the city council, and we're not their first priority. So I would understand that they don't have top-of-mind enrollment numbers. But what a great opportunity to bring them out here and show them our beautiful campus and how we can continue to be a good contributor. I think they'd be really surprised.
Thank you, Suzanne. Any other comments?
I would agree with Suzanne, just not in August.
I'm sorry? Oh, not in August.
I just want to mention also with the, the science fair that we held here, the college has always been such a wonderful host and so supportive of the program. And I'm thankful every year as someone involved with that. And I know that it's been a goal of mine for a while, for some years, right, Dr. Barrett, to transition it over to the college full-time with college staff. And so Dr. Ally Messenger from Water Resources is going to take that role, and her department will, will support her in that, in that role. And so I'm really excited about the future of the fair. Believe it or not, that, this fair, it has been going on for almost 70 years. So we are, our region, our Swanee, it's called Swanee Valley. Our Swanee Valley region is one of the few original regions in the state of Florida that's affiliated with the State Science and Engineering Fair of Florida Program and the International Science and Engineering Fair. So I did just want to mention the, the overall winners for the junior division, which is the middle school division. There was a team of boys from Fort White High School, and they were, their names were Joseph Demming and Luke McKinney. And then the senior division winner was Siler Robinson, also from Fort White High School. And he was selected by the judges to go to the international competition, the ISIF, which is going to be in Columbus, Ohio this year. And it will be his second trip because he won last year. It'll be his second opportunity to go to ISIF. And ISIF is amazing. It's, you know, the country, all the countries of the world are invited. And it is, it is the World Series of Science Fairs. And then Peyton Kilgore and a young man named Riley Woodland from Union County High School. Both of those had, boys had projects that dealt with environmental sciences and engineering. So they were selected to represent our region at the Genius Science Olympiad in New York. And last year Peyton was selected, and he placed third at that event. And so he, he was just dying to be able to go back and so excited that he gets to go back. I got tickled because this, when the students have to get online to do their application for the next level, and then I get an email saying, do you claim this student? Is this student your nominee from the region? And it was like the day after our award ceremony, his came in. He was already finished with the application, ready to try to get in. So we have great representatives from our region, and we have 20 students that will be going to the State Science and Engineering Fair the last week of this month. So I just want to thank the college for all the long-term support, and especially Dr. Barrett with your support in so many ways with the, with the fair. And I'm excited about its future.
You have, I forgot one thing.
Okay.
I'm sorry. So based on what Renee just said, and because of the award ceremony, I got to see the award ceremony and so forth. Any of the trustees that want, some of you have seen it already. I know Mr. Medina, Chuck has seen it, and I showed Suzanne earlier. And I know you went through it. But brand-new PAC, state-of-the-art. If you have a few, five minutes to look at it, it's unbelievable. And we've all done, thanks to the foundation, with their support to make this happen. So it's really a state-of-the-art for our students, movie nights, all the way through technical productions and so forth. So I just want, anybody wants to do, I'll gladly take them over for five minutes afterwards. So, and the TV crew will be over there. So thank you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're right, it's beautiful. We were excited that we got to be the first event in there afterwards. It was very, very beautiful. The warrant register is available for inspection, and the time set for our next meeting is April 10th at 5:00 p.m. here in the boardroom.
Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So, looks like.
Meeting is adjourned.
All right, thanks, Megan.
You may not have any.